Call lower to the regular city council meeting of Monday, September 26 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City manager Carey.
Here.
City attorney Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'm stymied. Okay, next if you'd all stand for the invocation speaker Pastor Peter Bossler of the Crosswinds Assembly Church of God. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Let's pray. Lord, we're so grateful that you, your presence was here this weekend and that you protected this wonderful city. So grateful for law enforcement officers and officials and, and the people on the streets who did such a great job. Lord, we thank you for wisdom and knowledge and revelation and I know we've been going through a tough time in our country and the city, but good things are happening and I thank you for the wisdom that is around this table and everybody in here that adds so much goodness to it. Give us great knowledge, we pray. Thank you for your goodness and your mercy and we give you the glory in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you for those kind words Pastor. If you'd remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Carrigan would you lead us?
I will. Please join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have comments from the public. Anyone who want to make a presentation under comments from the public if you do fill out a card. Okay. Come on up and then after you're done with your comments, please fill out one of these cards for the clerk, please. And just state your name for the record, right up here in the seat ma'am.
Madam O'Keeley.
Okay, go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Okay, we have a problem. I live on, at Reno Housing on, on Olavata in one of Reno Housing's complexes and we have a problem with the gangs there. People cannot even walk their dogs in the daytime where they're not obscene gestures and obscene remarks made to them. People are letting their dogs defecate all over and not cleaning it up. Lowe's looks like something out of Tobacco Road. It's, 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 the area is despicable. And, and the apartments there, they leave pampers and other garbage, just, just out there, just throw it and leave it. It lays there for days. It lays on the ground there for days.
Okay. So Sean, can you get some information from this lady or have someone get some information for us so we can contact her?
Yes, we'll take care of that while she's here.
Okay. Someone will contact you and we'll look into it and see what we can do ma'am.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thanks for coming down and letting us know.
Thank you. You have a grande.
Can you fill out one of these cards for us?
Yes, go ahead. If I could, could possibly have her talk to one of the staff members and get a, a better location on where the exact problem is because I believe the Reno Housing Authority project is in the city of Reno.
This complex is in Sparks.
It's right behind Lowe's.
It's right behind Lowe's?
We just had an issue there with the fence being down.
He's a, and, because I thought Battle is right there at Lowe's, but it's across. Okay.
I'm the one that wrote you the letter about.
Oh, well, thank you. We finally got that taken care of for you.
Thank you so much.
And we're also addressing the trucks idling issue also.
Okay, and my, my other friend here lives there, she has something to add.
Okay, come on up. Come on up.
My name is Rosalyn Gerard. And I, basically I, the same thing I have to say is what Molly had to say. We've had, Lowe's lawn is full of garbage and human feces. There's been a homeless man sleeping on the transformer all summer. Grocery carts are full of garbage and they stay on the premises for months. The loading area's not cleaned up and shrink wrap and cardboard and styrofoam blowing to the streets. I've called the manager.
You're, you're.
I've called the corp, corporate office four times and the regional office once. And they come out and they clean it a little bit and then that's just, that's it. They don't do anything else about it. And the lawn across from Sand Pebble has garbage, broken beer bottles.
Yeah.
And the 25 mile an hour sign is obscured by the trees on Olavata. And we have speeders that go by there all the time. They go through the Montessori School District at 40 miles an hour. And, of course, we have the gang bangers and then we have the apartments at 2481 and they've allowed cardboard, dirty diapers and mattresses to remain in the street and the driveways for weeks, knowing that waste management won't pick them up. So, and it's an ongoing thing. I mean, we've called Lowe's and I've called, I've called everybody, so. And I've written letters to the, the people that have the two vacant lots that are filled with garbage. One is owned by GB Developers in Sparks and the other one is owned by Joy Goodman in San Rafael, California. So I've written them both letters to tell them what a hazard it is.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Can you fill out a card too, please?
You bet.
And we appreciate you coming down.
You bet.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the next item, please. You want to clear the screen, please? Thank you. Clear the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson. Move to approve. Mr. Smith.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, next is recommendation to approve minutes, consideration and possible approval of minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting of September 12th, 2011. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the minutes as outlined by staff. Meeting of September 12th, 2011. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, next we have announcements and presentations. First is 4.1, commendation to the staff and volunteers who assisted during the accident at the Reno Air Races. If Chief Flock and Chief Kiefer could come down and accept this, please. I know we didn't have a lot of responsibilities out there or things to do, but we were on call and ready to go. Is that not right gentlemen? Whereas our community experienced a devastating tragedy on September 16th with the crash of an aircraft at the National Championship Air Races, resulting in multiple wounded and several fatalities. And whereas we extended our thoughts, prayers and support to victims, responders and witnesses of this accident and to their families and loved ones. And whereas our region relies upon a multi-tiered automatic and mutual aid emergency response system for the protection of lives and property during times of emergency. And whereas the emergency response system could not exist without the dedicated staff and volunteers from a multitude of agencies throughout the area who respond to all types of emergency events. And whereas during the events at the air races, staff and volunteers from throughout the region responded in an overwhelming effort to minimize the loss of life and assist in recovery. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, joined with the city council in extending our thanks and gratitude to the staff and volunteers who responded and commending their expertise and commitment during the air race emergency. Thank you very much. Say something if you want. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just on behalf of the Sparks Fire Department, our thoughts are with those that lost their lives and those that are injured in this horrible accident that we had at the air races. But thank you very much for this recognition.
Thanks Chief.
Steve Kiefer for the record and thank you also for that recognition. Our role was quite small. We offered assistance, but by that time they had things more under control than they needed. We did offer a mobile command center to them, but echoing Chief Flock's words, my heart goes out to the victims and whether they were citizens or public safety or those in the medical profession just having to observe what they observed. And I hope they have a speedy recovery and their families heal well. But thank you.
Thanks Chief. That's what I love about this community. When it's time for people to step up, they really do. You know, it was tremendous response. I think 150 or so people from the stands came out to, came out of the stands to help the first responders. So that's what, what's great about this community is people step up when disaster happens. So thank you guys for being there too. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would I have one minute to say some things?
Absolutely. You can have three if you want.
In light of the two shootings that we had this weekend, I just saw an incredible response and I'd like to recognize a few folks for that and starting with you Mayor and Sean, City Manager, for physically coming to our police department and assisting us. In addition, others that were critical in providing support, Neil Crute, Tracy Dominguez, Adam Mayberry, Chief Flock, Steve Driscoll and Chet Adams, each offered a segment of their expertise and it was greatly appreciated. It really helped us roll out the regional EOC and a plan to put forth that hopefully prevented some further tragedies. And then to the agencies that assisted us at the Nugget and afterwards was Reno Police Department, Nevada Highway Patrol, Washoe County Sheriff's Office, school police, UNRPD and the DA's office, all were responding to the scene while that shooting just had occurred. And then those that, there were, I would estimate 40 different individuals at the regional EOC meeting that we had, it's 6:00 PM Saturday night. And I give thanks to those. I won't list all those agencies, but it was overwhelming for the support. And then we received tactical respor, support from Sacramento FBI office and Las Vegas FBI office. We had TAC officers from those regions come and assist us. So I just want to take a moment to thank everybody. Appreciate it.
You know, Chief, for my part, being involved in the whole process was, was, was great for me. I mean, it really opened my eyes and it makes me proud to be the mayor of Sparks when I see our management team and our fire chief and our police chief, especially all our police officers and what they do on a daily basis and the decision-making that was at that meetings that we had at the police station was an unbelievable experience for me. And, and I want the people of Sparks to know that I feel really safe after being through that process and seeing what due diligence you folks do before you make a decision. I mean, you don't rush into making decisions and things and it was, it was something we had to do with the state of emergency, I believe. It was the right thing to do and it was, you know, came from a lot of different ideas and opinions that were in that room that day. So again, I'm so very proud of all the, of all the management team and especially the police department and what they did with this weekend's disaster. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. King, I believe. Fire Prevention Week? Is that time of the year again?
Something. Exactly.
We need that right now.
We do. City of Sparks proclamation. Whereas the City of Sparks is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting in our community. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally and homes are, and the locations where people are at their greatest risk from fire, while cooking equipment, the leading cause of home structure fires, associated injuries. And third leading cause of home fire is deaths. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And automatic fire sprinkler systems cut the risk of dying in home fires by about 80%. And whereas first responders for the City of Sparks are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through the prevention and protection, and protection education. And residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas the 2011 Fire Prevention Week theme, it's Fire Prevention Week, protect your family from fire, especially serves to remind us of the simple actions we can take to keep our homes and families safe and from fire year round. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th, 2011, Fire Prevention Week and urge everyone to protect their homes and families by heeding the potentially life-saving messages of Fire Prevention Week 2011 and to support the many activities and efforts of the City of Sparks Fire and Emergency Services.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This year's theme is protect your family from fire and that falls right in line with our fire prevention program that we've been doing for, well, for the past four years now. And it was implemented two years ago in, into an installation phase and that's our Project Safe Residential Smoke Alarm Program. This is our second year for installation on that. It's a grant-funded program. We're lucky enough to get a grant two years in a row and we will try to go for another one next year to keep it going as well. But so far we've installed well over a thousand smoke alarms in over 400 homes in the City of Sparks. This year our target area is 19th Street to McCarran going east-west and A Street to Prater going north-south. And I believe that's mostly in Councilmember Ratty's district, right?
Is that Ratty district?
So that's our target area this year. What we'll do is in March, April and May, in the springtime, we'll be going out each month and going out on a weekend and just trying to get that whole entire area. We'll go out and do door hangers first to get people aware of it and then between now and then, we'll be advertising it as well. We still go out now and install smoke alarms as people call us in their homes and we're getting quite a few people that are still calling us with this. This program has become pretty big actually and one thing you probably don't know is we put in for a trademark for our logo for Project Safe and I was told that it was, it was approved. It's just going through the paperwork process now. So that's, that's really neat. It's, it's definitely specific to the City of Sparks now. But that's, that's what we're going to do for this year for the theme. We're continuing Project Safe. We've already been out to Old Navy and Costco during a couple of their special events for Project Safe. We're, we're going to Home Depot this weekend and we plan on going to Target, Lowe's and Ace Hardware. I'm giving them a call to see if we can go out there and promote Project Safe as well. And then of course, the, the big thing that we do every year, this year's our 22nd annual Pancake Breakfast Open House at our main headquarters fire station on October 8th. And that's at 1605 Victorian Avenue. It's from 8 o'clock in the morning till noon. Now I don't know if we can get the overhead so people can see that.
Have you raised the price yet?
No, no, the price is still the same.
The same.
The price is the same.
It's down.
It's been the same for, almost from the beginning. There we go. Perfect. It's $4 for, for children, $5 for adults, but if you bring a canned food item, it, we give you a dollar off of that as well. So it's still a really good price for pancakes, eggs, ham, coffee juice and milk. Then we have static displays. We have car extracations. This year we have a kitchen fire simulator demonstration where it, we show you how to actually put out a fire in a pan in, in your house. But this thing puts off about a 20-foot flame, so it really gets your attention. But then we show you how easy it is to actually put that fire out in your house if you do it right. We'll have our fire safety trailer out there. Sparky the Fire Dog will be out there again and this is actually Sparky's 60th birthday anniversary. So he'll be out there for the kids. We have a puppet show for the kids that teach them about fire prevention and we're even teaching CPR to people that want that during the day.
Sparky, Sparky will be ready for social security here for a company.
Yes. But one of the main things really for this, this annual open house is to show our community all the services that we provide. We'll, we'll have tables set up that shows, shows everybody hazmat and EMS and how we do suppression, water rescue, everything that we do. That's, we want people to come in and see the fire station because it's theirs, talk with the firefighters, interact with them and ask questions. You know, ask, ask questions at the time and, and meet us. So it's, it's again, it's October 8th, 8 to noon and we're inviting the community out. And of course, anyone who wants to come out and volunteer and help flip some pancakes and that, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
Kind of. I'd like to say a, a couple of things. First and foremost, in the 28 years that I've been associated with Sparks Fire Department and having been an inspector in 1987 through 1991, the Project Safe program is by far the biggest, most impactful program that has come through the Fire Prevention Bureau since I have been there. And a lot of credit goes to Bob and his staff. Very impressive program. And we have a lot of services that we offer. We'd love to invite the community to come out and join us for the pancake breakfast and see some of those services that we have to offer.
Thanks gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one I think is, you need to stay probably for that anyway. Connects is 4.3, proclamation official day of recognition for all firefighters who have died in the line of duty. Whereas the United States Congress and the President have designated the day of, day of, the day of the annual National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service as a day to honor firefighters and emergency service personnel who have sacrificed their lives to save others by lowering the American flag on all federal buildings to half-staff. And whereas an average of 100 firefighters courageously make the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty each year. And whereas the events of September 11th, 2001 brought the national attention to the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices based by fire and emergency personnel on a daily basis. And whereas firefighters and emergency services personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in our community. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, call upon all residents and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe October 16th, 2011 in recognition of the patriotic service and dedicated efforts of our fire and emergency services personnel by lowering American flags on all buildings to half-staff. I encourage appropriate services and ceremonies to honor fire and emergency services personnel, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to duty have rendered invaluable service to our community and its citizens. I further call upon the residents of Sparks to remember all fire and emergency personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to our community and to pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Andy Flock for the record. The fire service is still one of the most dangerous professions a person can enter into. On behalf of those firefighters that have lost their lives to save a citizen's property or their lives, I thank you for this honor.
Thanks gentlemen. Okay, next is 4.4, presentation to Laura Sheldon Cason for her continued efforts and tireless commitment to people with disabilities. Mr. Lawson. Laura, come down. Come on down Laura. Would you ever come down? I know you're not shy.
Well, today I have the great pleasure of presenting this plaque to Laura Sheldon Cason. And it says, "On behalf of the City of Sparks, this plaque is presented to Laura Sheldon Cason for her continued efforts and tireless commitment to the people with disabilities. She played a vital role as a member and chairperson of the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled from 1999 to 2009 and it was instrumental in community development which contributes to better quality of life for all the people of Sparks. And this plaque in particular is given for the 2008-9, the Police Department Access Improvement Project. And the proponent was Laura and the designer was Hunter Creek Engineering and the contract was Northern Nevada Concrete. And one of these plaques will go in the Police Department to honor Sher, Laura forever. And this plaque, I'm going to have the honor of presenting to you. So thank you."
The work that I did for the City of Sparks was to help the disabled, including myself. There was no other reason for it other than the City of Sparks needed to help the disabled. This was a plus. The fishing pier was a plus. There was a lot of things that I helped with and I had a great committee that I worked with. I have to say, I have written something that I would like Chris Cobb to read for me as I am unable to do it, but I thank you very much for the plaque.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is from Laura. I, Laura Sheldon Cason, would like to thank all the employees with the City of Sparks for the help shown Jim and myself as we did the work needed to make the city more accessible for the disabled. We met some wonderful people and worked with some wonderful people on the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled. During the time we were on the committee with the City of Sparks, we met some fantastic people such as Gino Martini, Tracy Dominguez, Randy Waterman, Pete Etchar, Mike Vasselli, Ron Smith and many others. They were always anxious to help with the problems we may have found in Sparks and were able to get the problem resolved in a timely fashion. During Jim's illness, we had the Sparks Fire Department over at our house at least twice a week. They were always so helpful and courteous to both of us at this time. I know Jim was pleased when they came over to help him as he may have fallen and needed help. I would also like to thank Remza for all the help they gave me and Jim. I will never forget the one fireman, the last time Jim fell, that came back in the house to tell me it was about over. I knew it was time, but the compassion shown me was greatly appreciated. I know Jim would like to thank everyone that helped with his memorial service that also was a tribute for the service he gave while in the Korean War. He was a pain as most men are at times, but also one of a kind. The night before he fell at our home, for the last time we were sitting watching television, he said he wanted to tell me something. I muted the television. He looked at me and said, "I want you to know, I will always love you, be it in body or spirit." That to me, looking back, he knew he was leaving, but he was still with me and everyone in spirit. Thank you for everything, including the generosity shown me at this time of my transition from being wife to being a widow. It is greatly appreciated.
And I want to say thank you Laura. As I get to be the liaison to this committee now, you have great people that follow behind you. And thanks to Judy Henderson and her leadership, plus all of our committee members that are here. You've set a high bar for the rest of us to hold up to, so thank you very much.
Thank you Ben.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks Laura. Thanks Danny.
You too, sir.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Do you approve Consent Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.7?
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty and seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Consent Items 5.1 through 5.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passaged unanimously. Okay, let's move on to general business. Okay, first one of 6.1, Consideration and Possible Acceptance of a Donation from the E.L. Cord Foundation in the Amount of $15,000 for the Sparks Police Reserve Program. Mr. Police Chief Kiefer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Steve Kiefer, for the record. At the last council meeting, I did a presentation on the reserve program that today we're officially launching some of the recruitment efforts. And I was able to share with you that we were going to receive a $15,000 check that would support the Sparks Police Department Reserve Program. So I'm asking that you would accept this donation to the Police Department from E.L. Cord Foundation.
Questions? Mr. Lawson.
Well, I have to tell you, since that program was rolled out at the last council meeting, we got nothing but good feedback from my end, so I'm 100% in favor of that, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Whoops, we got more comment, a public comment, so. Let's go with another comment here, and then you can make a motion in a second. Mr. Smith?
I just can't second his motion.
So, Mr. Carrigan?
Chief, the only question I had is, what's the maximum and minimum age to volunteer?
The minimum.
That's too old? Okay, thank you so much.
The minimum age is 21 years of age.
And there's, max is?
I'm not certain of the maximum. I don't know if Jimmy or Jenny's breathing. I don't have that knowledge right now. I could get it for you, but I'm not.
It wasn't from a young person, so that's why I was asking. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Schmidt?
Have we not hired officers at 50 years old?
Right, and we're doing this a little bit different. We're not going through civil service with the reserves, so I feel comfortable talking about regular hire of police officers. These are volunteers. I just don't know. But I would assume it's going to follow, everything about it's following the footsteps of a police officer, so.
We've had the habit of not having an age limitation on the upper end of things, so I mean, it's, being a volunteer program should be a little more lenient than our regular program.
Absolutely, and if I, I know it's 21, our vast program is 18 to endless age, and we're all over the place. We have 18-year-olds and 85-year-olds. But that's the volunteer.
You could.
Barney.
Okay, I do have a public comment from Kathy Brandhorst.
Give you one bullet.
Now Kathy, I'm going to ask that you stay on the subject, and the subject is the E.L. Cord Foundation donation that's being made, so try to stay on task.
All right. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, Lisa Marie Presley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the U.S. President. Also, I just wanted to mention, you know, there has been a lot of military, police hired, and you can go as young as 12 years old, because there's a lot of military boys and girls who are very interested in police, and they are very good people, and we consider them as people because they are still going to school, learning, and they have more knowledge than most police officers. Also, we have victims in the Police Department. These victims are so badly tortured with machine guns, bullet holes going through their bodies, shotguns, even arrows going through their bodies because they don't want them here, or they want them to forget what they saw, or even forget what their scene.
Keep it on the foundation, please, in the donation.
Okay, and so I just wanted to briefly tell you, you know, how I felt about the $15,000. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else on 6.1? Okay, any further discussion? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Carrigan?
Move to approve.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve Agenda Item 6.1 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next is 6.2, Consideration and Possible Approval of Public Service Grants Funded by the City of Sparks Through Washoe County Home Consortium for Fiscal Year 2011-12, Retroactive to July 1, 2011.
For the record, Trish Keel, Senior Administrative Analyst at the Finance Department. Before using agenda seeking approval to grant $84,974 to four Washoe County Human Services Consortium grantees. These grants have been, have always been funded by the City CDBG entitlement grant, but if you recall, in January of this year, you approved an agenda item to shift funding from CDBG to general fund. So these four grant awards we are seeking you to approve are $28,426 for the dental access for uninsured children through the Hall Community Health Center, 30, oh, sorry, $28,246 for the homeless prevention program through Washoe Legal Services, $14,848 for the teen success program through Planned Parenthood in Marmoni, $13,454 for the Kids to Seniors Corner Program through the St. Mary's Foundation. Available, and Armando's here too, if you have any questions.
Ms. Ratty?
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
I move to approve the public services grants funded by the City of Sparks through the Washoe County Human Services Consortium for Fiscal Year 2011-2012, Retroactive to July 1, 2011.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'll second with comment.
Say that again, second with a comment?
Second with questions, comment.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve Agenda Item 6.2. Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, Armando, just to make sure we all understand, is that this is just, we're just repeating last year's grant. We're not going through the grant process this year. We're just repeating it over whatever it was last year. We're just doing it again and not doing the whole Human Services Advisory Board process.
That's correct. We are simply taking the reduced amount available from the three jurisdictions and doing a pro-rata allocation to the previous grantees.
Yeah, I think that's important that the council knows that that process is in suspension at this point, I guess is the best place, best words to use.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions? Seeing no further questions, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is 6.3, Consideration and Possible Approval, Resolution Number 3205, Resolution Authorizing Certain Individuals to Make Financial Commitments.
Hi, Debbie Hunt, for the record, Accounting Manager. We have had staff changes and reorganizations of our structured duties, and it's resulted in outdated list of those that are authorized to make investments on behalf of the city, and the resolution before you will update that list.
Housekeeping.
Exactly.
Motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Move to approve Resolution 3205 as outlined by staff.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve Agenda Item 6.3. Any further questions? Mr. Lawson?
I'm good.
Okay, seeing no further questions, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, hang on, I pushed the wrong button here. Okay, 6.4, Consideration and Possible Approval of a Second Amendment to the Truckee River Water Quality Settlement Statement, or Agreement, I'm sorry. Mr. Holm?
Yes, Mr. Martini, Members of the Council, for the record, Andy Hummer, Acting Utility Manager for the City. Data before you today is Second Amendment to the Water Quality Settlement Agreement. Original agreement was signed in 1996 for a period of five years. It was extended in 2001 for an additional 10 years. The agreement set out a requirement to spend $24 million between the tribe and the LGOC Reno Sparks, Washoe County. We're near the $12 million expenditure. This is simply time to put the water to beneficial use and storage agreements, things like that. With that, I'll open it to questions.
Questions for Andy. Mr. Carrigan?
So when is, I'm trying to find how long we're extending this?
An additional five years.
Okay, so that'll put it out till?
2016.
16.
Yep.
Maybe it's true, it'll be signed by then.
Yeah, that's some of what's holding us up.
Yeah, okay.
You're kidding, right? Any other questions? Looking for a motion. Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 6.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
6.5, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Liski Street Sewer and Street Rehabilitation Rebid Project. Bid Number 11/12-007, PWPWA 2011-327 to Peavine Construction in the Amount of $327,002.90.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Chris Cobb, Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. Here before you this afternoon, asking for your approval for the rebid of the Liski Sanitary Sewer Project. As you remember, a couple council meetings ago, we did ask you to pull this and reject all bids due to issues with state legislature, that we did not get the proper documentation at bid time. We had to reject all bids received. We went back, we put together the same project, however, almost like a poker game, we'd asked all the contractors to show their hand, pick it up. We did go in and find some issues that were small enough to add about 10% to the project, dealing with some critical issues that the transportation manager was aware of, with some curb and gutter, so that we created a bid that was still competitive. So we weren't asking the people to play their same hand again with the same numbers. So here before you this evening, and that's what we have. The numbers that we received, looking at the bids, Peavine actually did not change any of their numbers. They were the same as before, other than the extra work we added, which was about $28,000 extra dollars. So we were very fortunate, we had a bidder that kept their same numbers, actually remained the low bidder even with the additional work. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Questions for Chris? If not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the Liski Street Sewer and Street Rehabilitation Rebid Project, Bid Number 11/12007, PWPWA 2011-327 to Peavine Construction in the Amount of $327,02.90.
Do I have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 6.5 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 7.1. Public Hearing Item, Consideration, Second Reading, Public Hearing and Possible Adoption of Bill Number 2636, An Ordnance Redistricting the City Council Ward Boundaries Based on a 2010 United States Census. Mr. Rundell?
Jim Rundell, Senior Planner, here to present the proposal. A quick recap of how we got to today. The City Council initially reviewed a couple of concepts for redistricting the ward boundaries for the City of Sparks, based on a population of approximately 91,000. Staff then took one of those concepts and broke it down into three different alternatives, and once again, we worked, the council worked with me to, in the public hearings, to identify which ones worked. Ultimately, staff tried to incorporate all of the comments that were made by the council and made a proposal, which the council should have in their staff report, and that says proposed ward boundaries in your staff report. Based on comments from the first reading two weeks ago, staff also tried to prepare another alternative. That one couldn't be included in the staff report because essentially the staff report was due prior to the comments from last meeting. I should have, I have it here to hand out. Yes. So I wrote on the title page for this one, calling it 1E. Believe it or not, I couldn't figure out how to have the computer put that on there, so.
It's pretty good, isn't it?
We believe it.
It's impressive. They thought of that in a hurry, didn't they?
Yes. They always called the computer.
Orange whiteout?
Orange whiteout. So the council can see this was based on comments to potentially take Vintage Hills, the Vintage Hills area, out of Ward 5 and put it into Ward 2. We were able to do that, but by doing that, we had to adjust the ward boundaries at the intersection of Green Bray and McCarran, and then we also adjusted from the map that you received in your staff report. We adjusted this area here at the southeast corner of Bering and Sparks Boulevard into Ward 3. And this concept 1E does meet the thresholds established in the city ordinance of within the 5% population. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
No questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? I do have one card. Mr. Lonnie Feimster, if you want to come up. Mr. Feimster, you have three minutes.
Yes, hello, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to have some input. I'm Lonnie Feimster and council members. I represent the NAACP and a number of organizations that I've met with, Latino, other ethnic minority groups, Native Americans, regarding redistricting and our involvement with public input to the process. I will say this, that I'd like to thank Mr. Rundell and Adam Mayberry for being open and welcoming to the effort to provide some input. I would like to see more outreach done and more people involved. It's kind of hard to do this redistricting thing when you don't have the software and GIS experience, and I think it is important. It only happens every 10 years. There's a couple of things that I want to comment on. I've looked at the maps. Actually, I think Sparks did a good job compared to some of the other government entities, but we'll find out more about that in the next month. we'll find out more about that in the next month, about those entities. But one thing I do recommend is that there is one part that seemed to get in the way when looking at the maps. I think that the council could possibly change the charter to read that a council member who can remain in a ward after redistricting as long as they are re-elected. The reason is, rather than distorting the boundaries because of the location of a council person home, there are two council members that live in an area that probably should be in Ward 3, but the wards had to be drawn not to draw them out, and I think one simple change could address that, because it's kind of steering the whole process when where somebody has a house and they may move or something. Some of the council members, their wards encompass five or six miles to get to other sections, so I think that kind of distorts things, but that could easily be changed with a simple change saying, as long as you're re-elected, you could remain, and if you have to drive a half a mile to get in your ward, I don't really see it's of issue, because some of these wards are six, seven miles long. The other thing I would like to just comment on is, I would ask the city council possibly if someone could address the issue, are they in favor of ward voting, which is another community empowerment issue? And I consider this whole process community empowerment, so I think ward voting in the general election is the other part of this whole process that I got involved with, and I don't know where you stand on it, but I do think it should be brought up, possibly put on the ballot in the future. But, again, like to thank your staff, a very interesting process, is going to be really a interesting process in the next couple of weeks with Washoe County and the school board. So, thank you, and I don't know if anybody wants to address the question about ward voting.
Questions, do you have questions for Mr. Feimster? You do, okay, go ahead.
My question was, Lonnie, which map were you referring to when you were speaking? The one that published on the website?
The one that's on the website and the one in your staff report.
Is both?
And, yeah, I was just referring to the fact that the urban core of Sparks is, would probably be more compact and contiguous if it included Ward 5 and Ward 4 council members' houses, but right now, I understand as the charter is, you can't do that, but it's something to consider if, you know, if it didn't distort that, because then the map drawers have to do that.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Feimster, I understand, you know, the direction and, you know, if legislation wants to go that direction, I just want to, so we worked on an issue about 10 years ago, in which would allow a council person to live in redevelopment agencies and represent a different ward, and that was to promote home sales and things in the redevelopment of the downtown core area, and that was turned out by legislators, they were very, very specific, saying that you had to live in the district you represented, you couldn't live in some other part of town. Maybe 10 years later, they'll have a different look on at it, but that was their position 10 years ago.
Oh, it's good to know.
But I think that's, if we go down that road, and want to look at something like that, allowing somebody to live in redevelopment districts and invest in the redevelopment districts, you know, that could be added on to that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carrigan.
Mr. Feimster, just real quick, I'm kind of confused on what you're advocating about, you don't have to live in your ward to represent it, is that what you're saying?
No, yeah, not that you don't have to live in your ward, but if you are an incumbent, and the ward boundaries changed during registering, which only happens every 10 years, that you're not automatically...
No, we do it every election.
Every five?
We change it just about every, what do we change it? Every five years? I mean, this is, I've been on here for 12 years, this is the fourth time we've done it, so.
We review it every, so.
The law says if it gets more than 5% out of ballots, and it has to be redrawn, that's what the law is.
And that's why we had to do it.
So because you're redistricting more often than the 10 years that the county uses, because they're by state statute required to do it every 10 years, okay, so.
Yeah, the other thing is, if we change the charter, we have, we're the, one of the only cities in Nevada that has a charter committee, so it has to go through the charter committee.
Well, maybe at the next period where it's redistrict, I'll look into what happened in North Las Vegas, they had a problem where they went to ward voting, and it did cause some way somebody's house not to be in their district, and I don't know what they were...
They tried to do that, and we've done that several times by mistake, it's cut us out of our own ward, I know I was cut out once, I think Ron was cut out once, but, you know, you have to, you have to live in the ward you represent, because we have no at-large council people.
Well, I...
So I was kind of confused on what you were really asking.
My comment was just that the houses are six or seven miles from part of the ward, so what if you drew the line, your house isn't moved, but you have to drive five blocks to get in your ward, I think you just couldn't be just as good of a council person, but...
So what you're advocating is that we all go at large, so it doesn't matter where you live?
No, not that, it's just that you not be automatically disqualified for representing your ward if the boundaries change because of population, and you redraw them as long as you're re-elected to that ward. If they keep re-electing you, you could serve five or six terms.
No, you can only serve three, but...
Well, three, yeah.
Right, okay, but I guess, I'm still confused on that, so I'm not sure what you're...
Well, it's not on the agenda right now, so maybe I can work out, as I look into the legislative issues.
And then the other thing, as far as ward voting goes, I'll tell you how I feel about it. We've had this discussion on the city council, and I feel that it's, if we go to ward only, we're going to be like the county, and I have, right now, all of us have to go citywide to get elected, so we have, you know, we actually have, you know, we're invested in the entire city. I have a feeling that if you go just ward-wide, that the only people I'm going to care about, and I'm going to be real honest, these are the only people that have voted for me, and that's in my ward, and I'll get very parochial, and that's what I'm afraid of. Does that make sense?
Yes, it's a good argument, I understand that, okay.
What Mr. Feimster's getting to with the boundary deal is it makes it too convoluted because the houses are too close together.
Yeah, most of the houses.
Makes the boundaries too convoluted, and you're trying to make it an easier process, and then also on...
Well, you know what, I volunteered to have the city buy me a house out of Wingfield Springs so I can move that way, but they didn't, they didn't want to do that, so.
Buy you one over there, let's see.
Okay, we've got some more questions, I think, Mr. Feimster. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Feimster, I just wanted to make sure, and get your feedback on, do you, the way we do it in the City of Sparks right now is that we have ward-only voting during the primary, and that brings it down to two people, and then we have citywide voting for all wards. So in the primary, just your district votes, but then in the general election, for the top two people on the primary, go citywide. Is that what you're thinking about, or are you looking for a different type of voting on that?
Yeah, I think you described it correctly.
That's the way we do it right now, and is that acceptable, or is there tweaks to that system?
Well, my, I understand Mr. Carrigan's comment, I don't think that you're that bad of representatives that you would not care about the rest of the city. I mean, if you've got two wards going downhill, it affects the rest of the city unless you just live in a gated community and you don't come out, which is called like being in prison. So I think that the problem is sometimes the lower-income areas do not have the ability to support citywide elections for their council people, so you get the people with the most money generally getting elected, and it's a way of looking at it. I mean, I can't prove that that happens all the time, but I think it makes it more fair for people that are living in the older portions of Sparks, where the housing is cheaper, and you get more minorities and low-income folks, and they have similar issues. And I think if they get overwhelmed because someone has to campaign all out in Spanish Springs and Wingfield Springs and whatever, that only someone with a lot of money, I'm concerned particularly with the expensive elections, it seems like they're getting more and more expensive, and of course, you don't want to hear my philosophy, if they'd only banned political ads from TV, it would bring everything way down, but that's another council meeting.
Ms. Ratty.
Just since the question was asked, want to state again that I really do support the running by ward in both the primary and the general election, and for the very reason that you described, is that the cost of running citywide is prohibitive, and that it does, I believe, benefit candidates who are well-positioned to collect campaign donations.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
And I just want to go on the record, in my election, I was outraised nearly 3 to 1, and I still won by 18%. So it's not all the money, it's how hard you work.
Well, that's because you're a pretty good candidate. So, I mean, that's, popularity always works, too, sometimes it can outdo money, but...
Well, three times the money's still a big advantage.
Okay, anyone else? I'll give my opinion, too, I like the way we have it now, ward in the primary and citywide and the general, for mostly the reasons Mr. Carrigan stated, is, you know, you should have an obligation to the whole city, and the whole city should elect you, so.
You know, something else to think about, I'm going to put on my other hat and tell you that I would love to work, you know, run ward-wide, okay, only, because then I don't have to go out and ask, you know, for campaign contributions, and all I have to do is campaign in my ward, and as an incumbent, I think you're really going to give the nod to the incumbent in whatever ward it is. You have to remember that, too, because, you know, if I haven't had to worry about Ward 4, I can talk to everybody in the four months that I have the campaign, I can knock on everybody's door four times, just by walking. I wouldn't need any money. So, from, you know, if I wanted to be, you know, that would be easier for an incumbent to do, I think, and that's something to watch out for when, you know, if you're asking people to do that, just keep that in the back of your mind about, it's a lot easier to run ward-wide, for the reasons you're saying, but also think about the other reasons.
Mr. Smith.
I would just support Mr. Carrigan, and throw one other caveat in there, is that in some of these wards, while our population is within 5%, the voting block is much, much different. You know, the registered voters and voting block in two of the wards is much, much less, so you would, you would give an incumbent tremendous advantage ward by ward of being in the older areas, because you may have 2,000 people voting in one ward, and 8, 9, 10,000 people voting in another ward, and I can tell you that if you did the same map and broke it down, as that's the way we used to do it, was by voter registration, that's how we used to divide the city up until about 10 years ago, when the Supreme Court issued a ruling that it had to be done by population, one vote, one person, and that's what completely redrew the whole city around. So there's a couple of wards that the actual voting population is very, very small, and once an incumbent gets in, they only have to, I think in some wards, there's only 2 to 3,000 people that vote.
Okay, we need to change the subject, the city attorney told me we're a little off the agenda, so we need to move on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Feimster. Anyone else like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council for action. Questions? Any questions?
Well, I'll ask, this new boundaries, 1E, and I'd like to get an opinion from everybody in what they think, if this is the one they want to vote on, if they want to vote on another one. 1E is not that much different from 1D for Ward 3. It follows the natural boundaries of Bering and McCarran.
So I guess I'll ask a question, what was the reason for taking Vintage Hills out of the mix here and changing it? What's the...
That came up at the last public meeting for us to look at, if there was a way to remove Vintage Hills from Ward 5 and put it into Ward 2. At the first reading, that was the discussion, from what I understand.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as I showed staff, that whole section has been my ward for 11 years now, and the connecting roads that go through there, Spanish Springs Road down into Queensway and stuff, this whole area has, is a continuous traffic issue, there's complaints that generate often, it's continued going on down west to Queensway, that was the reason for that area, is try to, as we've tried to do on McCarran Boulevard, bring all those into one section so they could be addressed. Is that Truckee Lane, or is that Spanish Springs? What's that road called right there?
Spanish Springs Road.
Yeah.
Because we have complaints about traffic.
Right, they just all dump into that area, and there's always traffic issues and things in that area. And then the other was to clean up the intersection of Prater and McCarran. If we looked at 1C, you'll see that that, there's...
Well, you want to look at the other one, Councilman Smith?
There's some little jots where, you know, again, that used to be my ward, and some neighborhoods in there.
This is the proposed boundary as reflected in your staff report, I was calling it 1C, and I was calling this one 1E, but this is the area I think you're talking about, Councilman Smith.
Correct, correct, thank you.
So, maybe I missed something, please, Mr. Smith, explain to me again about the traffic problems.
You're running out of the word because there's been complaints about traffic problems, I'm
sure that's not the case.
No, it's to create, because one neighborhood affects another neighborhood over there, and it's then, I think, police departments say that we've continually, every couple of months, Truckee Lane and that whole area, we get traffic, and they all flow into one another, and that was the reason why. The same thing we did up in Pyramid Highway, we tried to get all the issues that had come together there.
Okay, questions? Anyone else? Mr. Lawson.
What map are you calling? No, this one I know is 1E.
Yes, sir, the...
What's the one we saw last time, 1C?
Yes, sir, and that's the one that's in your, on your computer, is 1C. It just says proposed ward boundaries, it doesn't label 1C, because I didn't anticipate providing another map until after the first reading. So you have the proposed boundaries, and then you have the one I handed out today, which says 1E. And the differences are the Spanish Springs Road area, and the Green Bray and McCarran intersection, and Sparks Boulevard and Bering. Sparks Boulevard and Bering, on the 1E, the paper copy that you have, has gone to Ward 3. And on the, on the boundary that you have on your computer, that you saw in the first reading, it is in Ward 5. And on the map, 1C, that you have on your computer, you saw it the first reading, the intersection of Green Bray and McCarran essentially has the meeting of the four boundaries, excuse me, the four wards. And then on the handout today, the intersection is here, at Green Bray and McCarran, and so you see that there's only two wards coming together right there. Essentially, a peninsula of Ward 5 comes across McCarran, and that's to have the 5% within, the population within 5% of each ward.
Well, the question was asked, which one would I want to vote on? I'll vote on, I'd like to vote on 1C, the one that's on the computer.
Ms. Ratty.
Well, and I, I mean, I appreciate the challenge that you have against, because no matter what you do, you move, move population, and so I understand what Councilman Smith's saying about what Spanish Springs Road and the traffic issues that are there, because I've heard, I've had some calls on that one as well, but the one I probably get more calls on is just the whole McCarran Ring and the sound around McCarran Ring, and so I think in terms of a community of interest, that blue patch now that is falling over the McCarran Boulevard Road has more in common with the people in green than it does...
Sure.
Because of that traffic issue, I mean, there's a traffic issue just about any way you look at this, so I think we're trading one uniform traffic area for another uniform traffic area.
Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, Jim, I think you cut out a couple houses that belong in the vistas, too.
I think that I didn't.
No, it's on the, if you go up to, go up to Vista Highlands.
On, on Vista Highlands.
1E or 1C?
1E.
Just keep going up.
Right there, just focus that. Okay, see where the, see where that, see where Vista Highlands, oh, back up, no, you did perfect on that one, just back down, go down a little bit, see where Vista Highlands and, it says Stoneview Drive, see that little loop that goes in there?
Yeah.
I think that's Vista's. Follow South Los Altos Parkway up north, go north, yeah, right there.
This is 1E we're looking at, right?
Right, right there, see that, where you're pinning right, there's, those roads right there, I think, I think those are the part of the Vista's. those are the part of the vistas.
Okay.
This is 1E?
I think they're both the same.
Well...
No, I meant between 1E and 1C, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, you mean on mine? On that one I'm talking about?
No, I mean to say on the two maps that you have in front of you. They were asking, is it one map, 1E or 1C? I think that that area is the same. But you're saying that you believe that this is in the, I may have missed that.
I think it is.
Okay.
I don't know.
Is that in your ward now? That isn't.
No, Mike, not now. The whole area right there was put into the ward to get my population up. But I think in every map, we've looked at the barriers, Los Altos Parkway, so everything on that side went into Ward Three, except for the top of the road.
Well, I was trying to, I was trying to make sure it wasn't the vistas homeowners association, and I didn't, I think that is.
It may be, and I did, I definitely made an attempt to try to get, do the homeowners associations within the same wards, but I may have missed that one.
Yeah, I missed it, too, until I saw it.
Till today, he said.
Yeah, I just saw that, not today, but this week.
So is that section right below Stone View Court, straight down to the right? Right above Ward, says Los Altos Parkway, is that in the vistas, too, Mike?
Which one?
See the few homes right in there where it says, see where it says...
No, no, I, those are their own homeowners association, but if you go where, you see Stone View Drive?
Right.
Yeah, if you take your pen, just drive, put it right by where it says Drive, yeah, and just see that, those three right there, and you just go like that, that's vistas, I think. Because there's a mountain right there. Yeah. I think the rest of it is...
That little cul-de-sac is missing on both maps.
That's what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's on both maps, it's outside. There he is there, that's 1E.
Yeah, I missed it.
1C, it's just that cul-de-sac.
Do we verify, have to see if that's in the association or not? How many people live there?
I'd have to go back to my desk.
But if it's not in the vistas, Mike, do you have a problem with that?
No, if it's not, that's fine, I was just trying to keep...
Find that out?
Can I do this?
Are we in a hurry?
Mr. Mayor? We did ask...
Did you ring in?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. Originally, we were given an October 1st deadline, but a county is what we were told.
Yes.
But how does, City of Reno have a January 1st deadline from the same county that gave us October the 1st?
That's a good question, Councilman Schmidt, I don't have an answer.
So, because it boggles my mind how we've been on this for four months now, and it's just appearing on the City of Reno's agenda, so I'm, I mean, I'm, I know it's nothing internal, but it's, you know, where did the October 1st date come from with the county that we had to do something different than Reno does? And if that's, if there's not a hard date here, Seth, then let's continue for two weeks until we can go ahead and get this thing worked out with, for Councilman Smith and Councilman Carrigan, and, you know, because that does change our numbers again.
Yes, sir.
So we need to take a look at it. So I'm willing to continue it for two weeks if that, if we don't have a hard October 1st date.
Linda Patterson?
The registrar of voters asked us to have this to them by October 1st, because they handle our elections, and they have to have everything redrawn for the January sign-ups for new council for elections. So it was by Dan Burke's request.
But Reno's saying they're not going to have theirs done until January 1st, that's the date they were given to have theirs.
Yeah, we can't answer that.
I understand, I understand, I just think it's, you know, we've obviously, staff has done a good job trying to push this thing and make it happen, and I just read the reports coming out from...
Ms. Ratty?
I'm willing to see it go for another two weeks, but I feel like we've put so much staff time and energy into this piece, I don't want to see it go too much longer than that, and so just as long as it's not, another question comes up next meeting, and we keep putting staff through motions on this one. And I guess the other piece for me, so I'm up for election this next round, and I'm proud of our staff for moving it forward, and one of the things that I look at is that if you're considering running for office against an incumbent, you need to know what the ward boundaries are going to be.
Certainly.
And so I think the longer we put it off, the more it favors the incumbent. And so I'd rather not drop to the standard of some of the other jurisdictions in town, I'd rather get it done, because then I can be out there and safely say, look, we didn't do anything to slow down this process that would have benefited me and not benefited somebody who wants to run against me. So I really think, if people are considering running for office in the city, they need to know what the ward boundaries are, and I know there's lots of other examples out there, from the state assembly and senate districts, to the county, to the school district, of wards that aren't done, but I'd like to play fair and get them done as soon as possible.
Mr. Carrigan?
Is everybody happy, or, you and Ron, happy with the changes? I heard you say you didn't want, you didn't like it.
He doesn't want to be in jail.
I'm in favor of 1C.
With the change you're going to propose.
I'm willing to make a motion and see where it goes.
Well, I was willing to make one, too, so I'll see where you go, because before you make the motion, I just wanted to say, just make the change for Ward Four into that, and if it turns out it's not in the vistas, then just take it out and give it to Ward...
I don't know, I don't know if we can do that.
Okay, then if it's not, then you have to bring it back.
Yes, I'd be, not that I'm a councilperson, but I feel more comfortable bringing it back and being able to analyze it than...
Well, I mean, I don't know how many people live in there, but I don't think it's going to throw us out of the five percent. And if it is out of the five percent, is somebody going to come and throw us in five percent jail, or what?
Five percent jail, you're in.
Just you.
Just me.
Okay, another question, Mr. Carrigan? Okay, what's the pleasure of the council? It seems like to me, if we're going to make some changes, it would be better to bring it back, and with the changes made, so...
So that, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead, Brian.
So, we're looking at 1C right now, we're, actually, that's the same in both of them.
Yes, sir.
So if, let's just say that goes to Mike, and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Are we talking about the boundaries set up in 1C? Is that the one everybody likes, or is 1E excluding that? 1C is right here, on your screen.
Mine isn't on my screen, because it won't come up.
1C is the one you saw last week, last meeting?
Oh, okay.
I prefer 1C purely because of the...
It's cleaner.
It's cleaner with five overlapping inside the McCarron Ring.
So, Jimmy, should we make a motion with that effect, if somebody wants 1C, and then with that exception up there, or can we, do we have to bring it back?
I guess if I, I would prefer to turn it over to Manager Carrigan for just a second.
In the neighborhood that Mike has pointed out today, and she assures me that was in the vistas homeowners association.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I agree with Ed, and I agree with Julia, let's get this thing done, right now. Because I agree, somebody that's, you know, might be running, and if they, and the registrar of voters wanted it in by October 1st, so let's do what we're supposed to do. You make a motion, and we'll put that in there, and call it a day. I don't understand why we have to bring it back.
So you want 1C with the change that you got up there, to come back next time?
I, that's fine with me.
Can I make a motion, and let's see? Can I make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Go for a motion.
All right, I move to approve the map 1C with the addition of Stone View Drive to be moved into Ward, to stay, is that Four? To stay with the vistas homeowners association.
Do I have a second?
I don't believe that's all of Stone View, is it? There's some more streets in there?
Well, there's a cul-de-sac of Stone View there.
The area that...
That's where we're talking about, right?
They know what you're doing.
Yes, we got all the streets in there.
Does that make sense, Jim?
Yes, sir, Councilman Lawson, I think that the potentially appropriate motion would be the proposed ward boundary map as reflected in the staff report, since I didn't title it 1C in the staff report.
Okay.
But we all know what we're talking about.
The amendment made by Mr. Carrigan.
Yes, sir.
Anybody want to second that motion?
I'm in, if you, am I not showing up?
Go ahead.
Second, and just to clarify, it's the proposed ward boundary map with the area that was circled on the council map today.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and then we'll go for discussion. We have a motion on the floor, everyone understand the motion, it was made by, Councilman Lawson seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the ward boundaries on the screen, plus the addition or amendment that Mr. Carrigan made. Questions? Only Columbus, Ohio. Any questions? Did you punch in, is this not working?
It's not working.
Go ahead, Ron.
I think, Mr. Mayor, Jim, just do a quick calculation, and 1C, Ward Three and Ward Four are the farthest range wards, is that correct? As far as the parking lot and numbers?
Ward Five and Ward Four are the closest to the park. Maybe nothing's working, so... I think, Councilman Schmidt, I think Ward Five...
Okay, but are we recording now, or not?
We're recording.
Okay.
So I have to be within...
It's not, so it's not coming up. Okay, so go ahead, Mr. Schmidt, with your comments.
Just, it looks like to me that the population difference was 234. It's 204 between three and four, with five in there. A move of 234 people from Ward Three to Ward Four would throw you out of balance. What happens if, after you take a look at this, you're out of balance? What do you have to do then?
I think that if, I think that if the motion that Councilman Lawson has proposed of taking the circled area, essentially moving it into Ward Four, if that doesn't comply with the parameters in the city ordinance of five percent between each ward boundary, then it will bring it back to the council with some type of revision for the council to vote on. And that would be at the next, essentially, the next council, October 10th. If that's okay with the council, I think that would be the most appropriate. So potentially, we may not have to do anything.
So how long will it take you to know this, Jim?
Probably, I mean, if I were working on it right now, it would probably take me 10, 10 to 15 minutes.
Okay, so, so when you come to the conclusion, if this passes, when you come to the conclusion of whichever it is, could you just email the council, let everybody know what's going on?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay with the council? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any other discussion? I don't know if this system doesn't seem to be working. Okay.
I have to amend my motion to include Bill Number 2636.
Is it okay with the seconder?
Yes, it is.
Okay, everyone understand the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think it passes unanimously. See you in two weeks.
Or not.
Or not.
On something else?
Why don't you use a dull pencil instead of a sharp one?
Okay, that was a lot of fun there. Okay, let's move on to 7.2, public hearing, and possible approval of the consolidated plan annual performance and evaluation report, CAPER. Who's doing this one?
Ryan.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Go ahead.
Mayor Martini, members of the council, Armando Ornelas, city planner. The CAPER is the city's annual report to HAD outlining how we have used CDBG funds, and along with Reno and Washoe County, home funds over the last, over the previous federal fiscal year. The submission of the CAPER is a condition of receiving this federal funding. The City of Sparks must conduct a 15-day public comment period, we did advertise that, and hold one public hearing, this would be it, and then we would have to submit this report to HAD by September 30th. So unless you would like me to go into detail, that concludes my presentation.
Questions for Armando? Further details. Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing item, anyone in the public want to speak to this particular agenda item? Pardon me? Come on down, you got to, don't forget to fill out a card when you're done. Do you know what this agenda item's about? Okay, good. Stay on task, Kathy, please.
Yeah, that's right, thanks. Hi, yes, the reason why I want to talk to you about the housing urban development, it says U.S. apartment. I'm having a hard time trying to qualify for an apartment. They usually want about 750, my income is only 942, I'm on disability, and so when they say housing, they don't really take the part, you know, where people can qualify when they say housing. They want more money than what you really, what your income is. I heard it was 50% of your income if you cannot qualify, but this is not true. And the urban development is where people who are low income, well, I've been by, you know, houses after houses, and oh my God, their property is trash. I mean, you could see cars just thrown apart all over the yard, you can see tree branches all over the yard, it's all dried grass because they can't afford, you know, water, and it just makes the neighborhood look really, really bad, no matter where you go, and this would be the urban development. And when I say that, they don't even pay rent, so they don't have to, I heard, because they don't have an income, so how are they going to pay rent? And that's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst, I appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, I'll pause the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Any further questions? If not, looking for a motion? Just yell it out. Mr. Schmidt?
Moved to approve, is there a, just moved to approve, 7.2 is outlined by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to approve agenda item 7.2, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Next is comments from the city council or city manager, anyone, city council, city manager? Ooh, Mr. Attori, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. We've been having an issue with the DeAndrea affluent agreement. DeAndrea's been in default, now they're close to about 100K. The city sent a letter to DeAndrea in August, there's been no response. We turned the water off, somebody came back and turned it on. We turned it off again. This time, we welded a box around it to prevent someone from turning it on again. Now, before this thing gets out of hand, and we have our good old-fashioned water wars going on, does anybody have any heartburn, if I work with staff, to bring an agenda item before the city council, declaring the DeAndrea in default of the terms of the affluent agreement, and coming up with some way that we can collect this 80 to $100,000 that's owed to us, and then just put DeAndrea back on the ordinance like everybody else is? I mean, this is taking up a tremendous amount of staff time, we're losing a lot of money, and I'd like to do that if it's okay with the city council, unless somebody has, like I said, some heartburn over that.
Any problems with the council?
Okay. Thank you.
You're on. Someone else for comments? Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, we're going to address in our future meetings some of our ordinances and fees, and I want to make sure that for that, we're addressing the special use permit fees, and I'd like to see that greatly reduced. I picked a number out of $1,200 for a special use permit fee, and want to address that as one of our, we've talked about a top 10 list of things to get accomplished right away. I believe that putting the special use fee down at a more affordable rate will bring some of these... some of these smaller projects out of the woodwork and maybe, you know, that little bit can help some economic development. So, in the short term, that's kind of what I like to see that go to. Thank you.
Anyone else?
That was addressed for you, Sean. Thank you.
Yes, sir, staff will be working on that. They did have the referral from the council for an agenda item on the fee schedule. We'll work those considerations into that. We are going to be wanting to conduct a workshop on some of the quick-hit changes we want to make in our planning and zoning programs. And we'll, that won't occur at the same time we take on fees, but it's soon to follow. So, there's a, those will be addressed in the coming weeks.
Okay, anyone else? Next is comments from the public. I have one card, Kathy Brandhorst or Brandhurst? Or is it the U.S. President?
He's a Democrat.
Case of repressed.
Yes, I am the United States President, but they're certainly stealing all my money, so I can't really afford to live anywhere, except the streets maybe. Mexico, you know, still coming across the border, so I'm still having that problem, you know. The United States money goes much further than, in Mexico than in the United States, so we need your money too. But anyway, my name is Kathy Brandhorst. I'm Lisa Marie Presley, John Benet Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. The reason, I just wanted to let you know, I am going homeless because they are stealing all my money out of the bank. I have negative $225 right now. And so, it looks like, you know, the bank is going to make me pay it even though I don't owe it. And so, I just wanted to briefly let you know, back in Hollister, California, Janet Diaz and Joe Vega were living inside my house and I'm homeless, sleeping in the schoolyard. And so, the police find out that the house is mine and they never pay their rent, so they have to be evicted. So, Hollister got into deep trouble. And I just wanted to tell you, you know, I live out there still at the 6200 South Meadowwood Mall Circle. And Scott still needs help. He has not been relieved. And Gene is a police officer and he also needs help. And Scott, remember, he is a security officer and they're both good people. And they only became victims where they work. Scott became a victim in the courts. And I do have a judge that is also held hostage. Scott just went back to work. And I also wanted to let you know, Gene decided to go back to work too. And he has been filled with bullet holes, shotgun holes. He also had cannonball holes through his body. And it's been a nightmare for me to go through this because they are my neighbors next door. And I'm not going to go through it anymore, so I have given them my 30-day notice. I am moving out and I'm never going to come back to this place again. The police will not respond because of Shamel. And he has never been hired as a police officer, but he can walk up to a civilian and arrest them for no reason at all. And he holds them hostage because they know too much about him or his father.
That's your time, Kathy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Call the order, redevelopment agency meeting for September 26th with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith.
Here.
Agency Secretary Patterson is here. Agency members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Martini.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Carey.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. That was on there by mistake. We've already done that. So, I'll move to comments from the public. I do have one card. Anybody wishing to speak at this time, please fill out a card. Kathy Brandhurst, and I see you want to talk about agenda item number 2, which is the roll call.
Oh.
Come on down.
Comments from the public.
Mm-hmm. You want to speak about the roll call?
I don't.
That's what you listed here.
Oh, I'm sorry. No. No, thank you.
No, you've still got time to speak if you'd like to speak.
Oh, all right.
Or if you don't want to speak, that's fine too.
I know. Excuse me, my nose started to run all of a sudden. Yes, I just wanted to mention, you know, we have no city council, no mayor in Reno. And it's been hard, you know, to accommodate ourselves, you know, as living in Reno. And it's not working out for anybody at all, nobody. It's just not safe. And I just wanted to let somebody know, you know, the problem is going to exist and it's going to get wider and worse, and it's never going to get better at all. They can call off, you know, at St. Vincent's dining room, I was standing there, they were arresting a few people that never had a job. And the police officers were also thrown in the freezer and they froze to death. And then they thawed them out next door to me and then they start stabbing them severely, so many stab wounds that you can't even count. And they're all police officers is what I'm trying to say. And so, I just wanted to let you know, it's, it's a big problem. And we are evacuating still from West Windover where Bob Kachel was in our area also. And we were destroyed and there's not much left of Windover. We didn't have much there anyway. But I just wanted to let you know, that is still happening. San Jose is now complaining of the same ones out of Reno and into their areas, so they're evacuating. I have Memphis, Tennessee complaining about the same people again, and they're evacuating. And so, I just wanted to briefly tell you, you know, Texas is also evacuating the same people because of the assassin of John F. Kennedy that took place. And now, they want revenge because they were supposed to have gone to jail for life and not executed. But according to them, they were executed and they didn't think that they should have been. They should have been in jail for life, in prison, in life, but for life. And so, this is a big problem too. They're evacuating. And so, it's still, wherever you go, it's the same people. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Move to approve of the agenda, consideration of taking items out of sequence, deleting items and adding items which require action upon finding emergency exists. For motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do you want me to repeat who did the motion? Are you, okay? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Recommendation to approve the minutes of the redevelopment agency meeting, minutes of August the 22nd, 2011.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Number 4, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period August 4th, 2011 through September the 7th, 2011. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Number 5, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer. Any comments from members of the agency? Okay, I'll open it up again for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Seeing.
I guess.
Come on down. Give your name at the record, please.
Yes, my name is Kathy Brandhorst. Lisa Marie Presley, John Benet Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to briefly let you know, it says the chief administrative officer. Well, we do have a lot of officers, you know, to try to protect the population and we really appreciate them also. But we also have this problem again. I want to mention, you know, John F. Kennedy was assassinated. I was too. And I was put away for four and a half years. I was buried in Memphis, Tennessee, in Graceland. And I just wanted to briefly tell you, you know, John F. Kennedy never had a chance. He was in an automobile. He was riding down the street. And this created a big problem for the whole United States, not just the country where he was assassinated. Because Mexico were in, was in, excuse me, was in Texas at that time. And Mexico's in our state, Nevada, California, other states. And guess what? They're always the same ones, never anybody else from Mexico. So, I just wanted to let you know, they are from Mexico that assassinate most presidents in the United States because the money has to be stolen out of the United States. They have never been so swank when they live in a house or apartment or wherever they go. They never had an automobile from, you know, coming from Mexico. They never owned furniture, no pots and pans, no nothing. Remember, they washed clothes in the ocean and this is the only way. They never had soap. They never had nothing. So, they're going to steal it. They're going to own it because they say that this is what they feel so swank about, that they never had no clothes. Remember, Mexico, they were all naked. I went to Mexico Tijuana and I was in there for just a few minutes and I saw them all naked, except for the people that are selling things stolen out of the United States. And they were selling our products to us while we were going into Mexico. But they did have to close those gates down. And because why? Because they were bodies and skeletons and skulls found and they were all U.S.-born in Mexico. And I was with the U.S. Navy at that time.
Okay, Kathy, wind it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, bring back to the agency. We are adjourned.